Called the meeting of City Council, first meeting in March to order. We'll start out by the invocation with Mr. Steve Curvin and respects to the flag by Mr. Buck Roberts. Would you please stand, please?
Let us pray. Dear God, we are thankful that we live in a land of freedom where meetings of this type can take place. We ask for your guidance and for your blessing on this body. Please help us remember at all times that when we sit in these seats, we speak as a government and not as individuals. And in doing so, help us always to honor and respect the rights and liberties of every individual subject to the jurisdiction of this government. Help us make reasoned and fair decisions in all that we do. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat, please. I think you've all had a chance to read the minutes. Are there any additions that need to be made to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Harbin makes a motion. Mr. Roberts, Mr. Buck Roberts makes the second. All in favor of accepting the minutes as stands, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Start out tonight with old business. We're going to request consideration of an ordinance to revise the planned development district document for Mystic Vineyards located off of Reed Road. Mr. Moore, I'll turn it over to you, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and Council. Again, you've considered this matter in the past. It's been postponed. What I'd like to do is kind of catch everybody up so we start off on the same page. And so I'll ask Maurice McKenzie, our planning and development director, if he could give you a summary of what's taken place over the last thirty days regarding this matter. And then, Mr. Mayor Protem, you may want to hear from the developers. And then certainly, there appears to be some people in the audience that might like to speak to this matter. So we'll let Maurice start, and then I think Mr. Dunaway will be representing the developer.
This item first came before you on February ninth, and the request at that time was to revise the PDD document for Mystic Vineyard subdivision to make a couple of changes. One being to reduce the side yard setbacks on the construction of future development in the subdivision from seven and a half feet to six feet, and also to allow houses to be built on monolithic slabs instead of exclusively crawl spaces in the subdivision. According to the PDD document, slab houses are not permitted in that subdivision. At that meeting on February ninth, no action was taken in order for the applicant to go back to the drawing board and to take into consideration any possible revisions based on the significant discussion that took place at that meeting. And during that meeting on February ninth, one of the items regarding the side yard setbacks, it was stated at the meeting that not all of the lots really needed the side yard setback revisions, and they went back to the drawing board and determined certain ones that they felt like was necessary to have those side yard setback revisions from seven and a half to six feet. In your packet, there was a drawing showing three lots that they requested last week. This afternoon, I received a revised document that actually has ten lots, and I need to get this pulled up on overhead. Let's hand those, yeah, we have some to hand out as well, but if you get me to pull that up. But on the overhead, you'll see that there are now ten lots. The three lots that are in the drawing that you have in your packet, they're still included. There are seven additional lots that they're requesting the side yard setback reduction on, and those you'll see when this comes up, that those are lots on the interior. It's kind of highlighted in the blue here. This is Reed Road, and this is the entrance to Mystic Vineyard subdivision. So you can see seven lots on the interior and the three lots on the exterior. And you can see from the drawing that all the lots are either affected by a curve in the road or they're located on corner lots. So that is their new proposal to have side yard setback reductions on those ten lots in the subdivision. The other item was the slab construction, and at the meeting on February ninth, there was a lot of discussion about that as well. And it was suggested that the applicant go back to the drawing board and look at other alternatives as far as construction's concerned for foundations, and to see if there's something else that may be a better fit to complement the existing twelve or so houses that are in the subdivision now. According to the applicant, their original proposal for the monolithic slabs with brick veneer will remain as is for this particular request. So what's before you tonight is a reduction of side yard setbacks from seven and a half feet to six feet on the ten lots that you see here, and also to allow the construction of monolithic slabs with brick veneer on future development of the houses in the subdivision. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from the staff. As Mr. Moore said, the applicant is also available, and they have more information. They have some detailed photographs as well to provide to you.
Does the council have any questions?
I got one, Mayor Protem. Maurice, the seven and a half foot setbacks, when the original development was put in, those setbacks were agreed to at that point in time?
Yes, sir. Everything you see in the document was agreed to in 2008.
The six foot, the foot and a half on each side, the three foot difference, what is our current, I mean, what do we have now?
It varies based on zoning district. Based on larger lots, you'll have larger setbacks, whether it's on the front, rear, or side. So it really depends on the zoning district that you're in.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Stewart?
So since it varies from zoning districts, this particular zoning district, what would our city code be for this development?
I'll have to look at the zoning ordinance.
Would it be six feet? Would it be seven and a half feet?
I'll have to look and see what the average lot size is. These lots are around, I'll have to check and see what that is, but I'll just assume it's R-ten comparable to that. I've checked my setbacks in the zoning ordinance, but I can get back to you in just a moment. I have that with me. But again, this is PDD zoning, so the zoning for this site is specific to this ordinance. But to give you a comparable, I'll give you an R-ten. How's that sound?
One more question.
Mr. Harbin?
Was that, were those seven and a half feet negotiated with the developer at that time, or do you not, do you recall?
I don't recall. A lot of things were negotiated at that time.
Okay. Okay.
I have one question. The question I have dealt with the fact that we had the three that were the corner lots that had the setback, and now you've added one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more, but those do not have the same problem that the corner lots have. The problem with the corner lots is that they have a narrowing at the front, so I could understand that situation. But the others don't have that kind of situation. Why were those added?
The applicant may better answer those for us, but again, I see it, they explained to me earlier that they're located in the curve of the road, much like the other lots on the exterior, as you can see, and apparently that's providing some sort of hardship for the style of house that they're wanting to construct.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Curvin.
On the setback issue, isn't that really more in the form of a variance? And would it not be more prudent to deal with those on a case-by-case basis? Each time there's a need to look at that, then that would be somebody that says, well, this house won't fit on here, and we've got to change this or that? And wouldn't that be a variance issue that should be treated in that fashion?
Typically, that's how we handle variances, is a case-by-case basis. And you may remember that last year, they did receive variances for rear yard setbacks on five lots in the subdivision. And they went through the conventional variance process through the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is obviously another board that considers that. But I don't recall changing the setbacks in a PDD document like this, but I guess it can be handled that way or another way. If you recall, initially, they requested that all the lots change to six feet to keep it consistent. Now it's changed a little bit.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Mr. Dunaway, you're representing the company tonight.
Mr. Governor, please, court, please, excuse me. Day and night. Please, the council and Mr. Mayor, my name is Tom Dunaway. I represent the developer as well as the homeowners association. One of the last questions Mr. Curvin had last time was, do we have a front-end picture of a house on a slab to show him what the elevation, what the steps look like? And I'll pass this around for your views. In 2008, Mystic Vineyards received a clearance from City Council for a development. This agreement between four different neighborhoods was forged by Mr. Curvin, who did a brilliant job and one that required masterful negotiations. And I congratulate you for that. That was 2008, and now it's 2015, and the economics of the development have changed substantially. The 2008 plan is now simply economically obsolete. My client, as owner of thirty-nine lots, needs some economic relief in order to afford to develop these thirty-nine different lots. Economically for the city, it would mean approximately fifty thousand dollars a year in taxes, and for the homeowners, it would mean a viable homeowners association to provide amenities to a developing neighborhood. The city building code requires a concrete substructure to be eight inches above grade. Many of the existing homes at Mystic Vineyard now are ten to twelve inches above grade, so the proposed zoning change is not going to change the neighborhood look invisibility. As in most zoning cases, this is an issue of economics versus emotions. If a yes vote is recorded tonight, we develop thirty-nine homes and bring fifty thousand dollars into the city. The most important issue before the council that I did not have last time is the City Council's longstanding pledge to honor the wishes of neighborhoods. This is a neighborhood that's petitioning you, is Mystic Vineyard. There are currently six people living as homeowners in Mystic Vineyard. There are four houses under construction. All ten of these homeowners or proposed homeowners have signed a petition that I'll pass to you asking you to pass this zoning issue. Please honor this neighborhood's request. This is important for them. It allows a developer to go forward because the relationship of the homeowners association allows the homeowners association to remain viable. That means interior amenities are paid for, lights are paid for, the pump on the pond continues to be paid for, and without the developer, six homeowners are not going to be able to afford to do that. So I'm asking you to look at this petition. I'm also asking you to see the, what this house would look like on the slab.
Mr. Dunaway, last week, or last time we were here, you had two photographs. One of those was...
Yes, should I have those again?
The one of them showed a, one of the houses that's built that does have a crawl space.
Right.
And I mean, I think it would be helpful if you kind of could see both of those. That one in, the other one you had before really didn't show front elevation.
This shows front elevation.
Yeah, one of them did, I don't know.
These are, these are magical photographs to show you the veneer, so they're like on the slab. Why the other houses are requested to have differences on the, that were not pointed out, and I'll get the bill.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any expertise. Again, we're asking you as a neighborhood, and I represent the homeowners association, there are ten people. One person has not voted or is present tonight, but if the ten people contacted, either live there or person houses, they're asking you to please pass this zoning change.
This one you passed around last time.
Yes, sir.
That's not a crawl space?
No. If that doesn't have a veneer, it does not have a crawl space, is correct.
That's a crawl space there.
Ma'am?
Does a buyer have potential, the developer have potential buyers for these houses, these seven, nine houses that have not been built already?
There are thirty-nine houses. We have had a very active marketing plan. They sold another lot yesterday. They're going to start grading tomorrow. They believe that their time economically has come, if they can have just a little bit of leeway. I think the difference between this is about a four percent change in their economics, and that makes a big difference in their marketing plan. But these have four houses, four of the people that have signed, excuse me, Mr. Thompson, make sure I'm turning it correct. Four of these houses that I'm talking about in subdivision or under contract haven't closed yet. But those four people did sign that petition asking you to change the zoning request.
Mr. Dunaway, would you turn those pictures around so we can look at it?
Certainly will. Yes, ma'am.
Maurice?
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'd ask about...
Because I know in this petition that Mr. Dunaway has passed around, it says to change in the side yard rear setback from seven to five to six feet, six feet is actually the code for the city of Anderson.
I'm not sure what that means. Again, setbacks changed by zoning district, the, in our conventional zoning, R-five, which is five thousand square foot lots, they allow side yard setbacks of five feet. And R-ten is eight feet. And R-15 is ten feet. So it varies by zoning district.
Are there any other questions by the council?
Is there extra copy right here?
Yes, an extra copy up here, sir.
One more question.
Mr. Stewart has a question.
Mr. Dunaway, in your petition here, it talks about the actual code for the city of Anderson being six feet. Where did you get that from? Mr. McKenzie was kind of contradicting that a little bit.
I'm sorry, that was my understanding, that was, at the time that the seven and a half feet were negotiated, that six feet was code. If I'm, that was based on my understanding at the time that the council passed this.
Did you say it could be code?
Those setbacks could be codes. We do allow side yard setbacks in certain instances. It just depends on the zoning district.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Curvin.
Mr. Dunaway, do you have any estimate of the cost savings that using the slab approach would generate for each house?
I do not. I'll consult.
I mean, I've heard a figure of thirty-five hundred dollars, but I don't know where that came from, but to be honest with me.
Came from Mr. Stewart.
Well, let me ask you this question. Whatever that savings amount is, are the developers intending to reduce the sales price of the house they're building? Or, or are they simply going to increase their profit margin?
No, sir, they plan to do whatever is necessary for them to market in today's economic environment. You know, you can only sell a house for what somebody will pay for it.
So they're not, they're not going to go out the next day and say, well, we're going to cut the price structure on this thing, buy that amount of money?
I don't know. I can't answer what their marketing procedure is, but there's a market in Anderson at a certain price, and they plan to market it at that price based on their cost and the profit margin that's projected, just like any other builder would do.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Roberts?
Tommy, I think what confused a lot of people at the last meeting is the difference between a slab on grade than a raised slab. And I think that everybody got confused about all that, because we were talking about two different things. If you're going to raise a slab, that means you're raising it, you're not pouring it on grade within eight, ten inches of the ground. And then you veneer that. If you raise that slab, it's completely different.
I understand that, you know, the, having to comply to make a raised slab would really eliminate the...
It'd do a crawl space.
The crawl space. So it's really counterouts each other economically.
Yeah, because when you raise any house with a crawl space or raised slab or whatever, you've got more than just the framing, and that you've got, you've got railings that has to be come to play if they're within thirty inches of the ground.
Yes, sir.
And regardless, two rises, you have to put on the steps. So that's, that's another thing.
And as you well know, it also depends on the grade of the lot.
It does.
But we plan to work with the city codes department, as we have, very closely to make sure that we adhere to codes and that we provide quality construction.
Yeah, I think that the people that's really concerned with this ought to know the difference of what we're talking about. And I don't know what they're really doing on it.
Can somebody give us a definition of a monolithic slab? What are we talking about?
Well, the monolithic slab means it's a, when you pour the slab, you go from four inches where the floor level is, and it turns, and it's all in one pour, it turns and makes the foundation back down to the ground.
It's down on the ground, in other words.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, it could be, in certain areas, it could be on the ground, and in certain areas, it'd be raised. It depends on the lay of the land.
But it's still a concrete slab?
Still a concrete slab. Any way you put it, it's a concrete slab, yeah.
Or whatever you want to put it for, it's a concrete slab.
That's it. We have photographs of a number of Bradley Park houses that that becomes an issue that are on slab.
Wait, just a moment, please. Let's, wait just a minute, please. We'll give you an opportunity to speak in just a minute. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Dunaway?
No, sir, not unless you have any further questions.
Any other questions from the council?
One last question.
Go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
Do we have any idea out of the thirty-nine lots left to be built, how many are proposed to be on crawl space versus slab, monolithic slab, whatever the case may be? Do you know what the...
The thirty-nine lots that are currently on the market would be proposed to be subject to our zoning change, which would be on the slab. The only change would be if we had an individual buyer who gave specification for a different type of construction.
Then that was being crawl, if they wanted crawl space, they could have it put on crawl space.
Yes, sir.
But it cost them a lot.
No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dunaway. Now, what we're going to do is give anybody that's out here the opportunity to speak, what we're going to ask you to do, if you would like to come up and speak against this or for this, whichever you want to do, if you would come to the microphone and give your name and where you live, and then we'll go from there. Anyone here to...
Mr. Chairman, could I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
It would be helpful to me, and I think everybody else, if we could go in and get all the ones that are for this proposal to speak, then the ones that are against it.
Okay. Anybody for this proposal?
Any spokesmen they might have.
You are? If you come to the, come to the microphone, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem, could I add one other thing?
Yes, sir.
I know there may be several people who's willing to speak, but you know, if there's a spokesperson for the for and against, maybe everybody won't have to repeat the same thing, so help it go a little bit smoother, so...
That's fine. Go ahead, sir. If you'll give me your name and where you live.
Yeah, my name is Richard Klimaszewski. My wife and I live at 125 Mystic Vineyards Lane. I first spoke at the planning committee meeting that was held back before it came to the council, and I spoke against the proposal. My wife and I have had a lot of discussion, and we have changed our mind. And I wanted to speak first because there's a lot of people up back here who think I'm a turncoat now, but that's the way it is. My wife moved in in 2009, and for four, roughly four years, she sat there with nothing going on in that development. These people came in in roughly 2013, whatever that timeframe is, and put in six spec homes and have been pushing the development. In the end, we feel that having that development completed is more important to the value we have invested in our house than it is to have our house, which is on a crawl space, intermixed with homes that are on slabs. The homes that they're building are certainly good-looking homes. I'm not an expert. They seem to be decent quality. I'd rather they were all on, to be honest with you, on crawl spaces, but if they need to stay in the business, they need to go to the monolithic slab to save money. My name is on the petition that was given to you earlier among the people who said that we would like you to support their proposal. The only other comment I would make, that one of the, in the earlier meetings, one of the comments that the folks made from our neighbors at Bradley Park is the fact they're concerned about us depreciating or lowering the value of their properties. I did a search on the Anderson City website. The average tax valuation of the seven homes occupied, well, six homes occupied now, although I did all seven at the time, in Mystic Vineyards is two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. I went random through Bradley Park and selected ten homes and did the same average, and it comes out to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. The homes that are being built in our neighborhood are on the order of forty thousand dollars on average, it varies probably up and down, more valuable than the homes that are in Bradley Park. And they're good homes in Bradley Park. I'm not saying they're bad homes, but the valuations are, they are lower. And if putting it on a slab lowers our valuation, even five or ten thousand dollars, which I really don't think is going to be the case, we're still going to have homes that are more valuable than the homes that are in Bradley Park. And I fail to see how putting those homes behind that wall that separates us is going to depreciate or lower the value of their homes. That's my comments. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I have not talked with, although we signed the petition, I have not talked, so I can't say I represent anyone other than my wife and myself.
Hold on. Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate that.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're very welcome. Anyone else speaking for? Okay, is anyone speaking against? You could give your name and where you live?
I'm Glenn Thomason, and I live in Bradley Park, and I have for seventeen years. And it seems that Mystic Vineyard Development has had problems since its inception, not long after its opening, and since it seems we have been here three or four times with developers wanting to change the original outset of the original plans and the codes that were put there when these properties were developed. And we find also that the, always to that point, that we have considered everything from adding more wood and siding, eliminating the brick or stone work, and reducing square footage to reduce it to for setbacks. My memory serves me right, some we allowed and others we opposed. Other builders have complained about the price range in the lots. For those that are not familiar with that section, if you recall, David Sprouse, along with David Roberts, developed Reed Place first, and then Bradley Park. After Reed Place, David Sprouse checked into the cost of preparing the property, which is now Mystic Vineyards, making it suitable for development, building more of the patio homes on that property. The property had a spring on it, had been used in the past as a trash dump over the years. Bottom line, the cost analysis that he received was phenomenal to meet the codes and prepare the area suitable to build these homes. This is why he junked that idea and moved on down the road and developed Bradley Park. So now we're here once again, facing the issues as before. Change the codes and requirements, so the construction costs can be reduced, building a less expensive home, so the selling price of the homes can be reduced in order to be able to increase the pace of sales of the homes, so said the article in the paper. The change is to build these homes on a concrete slab foundation, and instead of a crawl space, which would save the builder money. Now, I know that there's been economic situations, and I've been in real estate for ten years, and when the problem arise and came forth years ago in 2005, '06, and '07, and therefore after a while, when your fees become more than what you're selling, it's time to abandon the ship, and that's what I did. But in that time also, in showing homes in some very expensive areas, we'd have a client who would see a house, and the first thing they would ask, "Oh, that's a very beautiful house." But, and they'd say, "Is it on a crawl space or a slab?" And then we'd say, "It's on a crawl space." Well, you can junk that out on one end. I think there's a stigma to this. Now, in different areas of the country, there's probably million-dollar homes that are built on slabs. I don't deny that. But the change is to build these homes on a concrete slab foundation instead of a crawl space would save the builder money. And also, with these new side yard setbacks from seven-five to seven to six feet, bringing the houses closer together. I really don't have a problem with the setback. You go through there now, the houses are very close together. They're coming closer together. But according to the news article that I read, this would save the builder at Meritage Homes about $3,500 per home in construction and cost. And I have a couple of questions concerning this matter. My first question is, did the builder or the new builder or whoever, did they not know what the codes and restrictions were when they purchased this property there at Mystic Vineyard? Did they not know what was to be expected? Or did you not consider this $3,500 a cost factor, and it would be something that they would have to deal with as a builder? I understand there are thirty-nine lots for sale, and if you sold all thirty-nine, it'd be a savings to the builder of $136,500. If you reduce the cost of these homes, it's going to reflect the resale value on other homes, and I believe that, as realtors and others pull comps in our area. First of all, I don't mean to be ugly or inconsistent of their problem, but I certainly don't think it's a responsibility of the homeowners in our neighborhood, like Reed Place, Garden Gate, or Bradley Park, and others, to have to compensate the value of our properties due to the fact that these homes are not selling. I feel sure that there are other homes in the city and county that are not selling. I'm sympathetic to the problem the developers have, but I'm more concerned about my own investment than I am theirs, and that's not being selfish. That's being with good common sense, I think. When you or whoever finishes developing the property, that builder's gone on to other projects, which we've seen several builders come in there and leave and go on to other projects. They couldn't make it go. When you are, when you or whoever finishes developing property, you're on to other projects, and we're left with a bad decision. Not only that, but if we start doing this at every request... How long will it be until we're fighting to keep duplex apartments or modular homes or even double wides out? I'm totally against this rezoning request. I separate the two. The setback, I have not a problem with. But I'm totally against the rezoning request and feel that you, as a council and codes department, should stand with us, the homeowners that have been there and have went through all of this. So, as I said, and I hope you deny this request from Meritage Homes. To me, it seems the situations need to be laid to rest. This is about four, three or four times that we've come to these meetings. If a person wants to develop or build in this area, they need to do their homework concerning restrictions, codes, expectation, and consider the costs and go forward instead of trying to change everything to meet their needs so that they don't suffer financially. If they can't comply, they need to move on to other parts of the city or county where they can. With those thoughts, I simply say to you gentlemen and the mayor and the codes department that I think that as a resident there, and I have no position of ill will toward nobody in the Mystic Vineyard area, but I do know that it has been a problem. And I do know that one of the reasons that property has elevated to that position is simply because of the cost factor that it costs to remove the debris and things of that nature. And as I said at the beginning, that's the reason that Bradley Park does not sit there today, because of the foresight that David Sprouse saw and moved on down the road and developed Bradley Park. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. We have one question, sir.
I'd just like to make a comment. I think you had mentioned that you were against the rezoning request, but for clarity, this is not a rezoning request. What it is is a revision to the PDD document, and I think, from what I've heard, is that you're against one of the revisions. You don't have a problem with one of them, which is the setbacks. You just have the problem with one of the revisions for the slab versus the crawl space. Is that correct?
But I was thinking that the rezoning sign was there for rezoning, or what was being said.
No, sir. It's not a rezoning request.
Well, and I would take issue with that, Mr. Stewart, because it is, in effect, a rezoning. It happens to be a PDD, which is a form of zoning. And we're actually trying to change that now, or they're asking us to change it, so that is technically a rezoning request. I don't think it makes any difference technically, but we know what they're asking for and it's a question of what they get.
I was just, you know, going by what our staff says, our staff, that this is a revision to the PDD document.
That's exactly right, but it's a form of zoning.
So it is a rezoning?
Yes.
And let me continue. Is anyone else here that would like to speak against this proposal?
None. I would like to speak.
Yes, sir. We know you, Mr. Albergati, but we're going to ask you to give your name and where you live.
I'm ready to do that. I'm William Albergati. I live at 406 Highland Way in the city of Anderson. Building construction brought me to Anderson in 1947. And I'm going to address first the history of the property, which agrees with what this gentleman said, except he classified it as a trash dump. I'm going to say very clearly, in my opinion, it was a dump, but not a trash dump. It was a dump with relatively clean material, old curbs, old broken pipe, concrete pipe, old trees, large trees. Nobody knows what's under those houses. I don't downgrade it, but if you figure that there may be subsidence, there may be settling, and these gentlemen, I can't speak for them. They're here for themselves. But I'm going to speak for the thirty-nine people that are not here, and also for those in Bradley Park that fought so hard to get the PDD worked out. There's several things that connect a house to the ground. One of them is the water pipes. The water coming in, it's under pressure, and it can generally handle changes of elevation. The other one is sewer. Old houses have bathrooms these days, and they depend on the grade of the sewer. And they have to have a specific grade. It can't just be anything. One, if it's too steep, the water runs away from the material that's in it, leaves it. If it's not steep enough, it clogs up. I'm involved with, as a trustee, on the duplex that goes on a slab. Currently, there are about fifty or sixty holes drilled in the carports part of this, because we've had some, after fifty or sixty years, we've had some problems with the sewer. And someday, we're going to have to drill that whole line out from the various bathrooms to the outside. That's going to be expensive. Fortunately, the duplex is paid for. I'm not fixed with that problem. But these young people who buy these houses and don't know what's under them will be much better off if you maintain a crawl space, because with a crawl space, you have room to get under the house. And if a certain part is sagging a little bit, you can come in with a good contractor, and I think Mr. Roberts would attest to this, can come in. Even if you had to take a hole in two bedrooms, you could drill, open it up, put down a larger foundation, put in a beam under the beam that's sagging, and literally jack the house up. I've never seen a house jacked up in Anderson, but I have seen one on Fripp Island where they jack the house up and put a first floor under the second floor. Anderson has several houses that are one-story houses that have two stories. That's not relevant to what we're talking about here. What I would suggest to you do is reject the slab concept. And as I understand it, the slab will either sit on dirt that is original dirt, hadn't been disturbed through the ages, even by the rainwaters and so forth. It's been disturbed. Some, I know, nothing, it's not constant. But the beauty is, with a crawl space, you can get to it. With a slab, if you have trouble, you have a terrible time getting to it. Very expensive. And there's no reason to change it, except economics. And I would be surprised if a contractor would take a job that he didn't make more money than three hundred, than less than forty-two percent. Say that'd make $4,000. So we're here talking about that. Let me just check and be sure I'm covering the points I need to. Let's talk a minute about slabs. If you own a slab, generally in the houses in Anderson, on the boulevard that own slabs, I don't know whether there's over one or not. The last time I was in, the one that was on a slab, the master bedroom bath, master bath, had a crack in the tile, about half inch to three-quarters of an inch. And what the buyer did about it, I don't know, but he could see it. It wasn't concealed. The people that come in here and buy these houses, they're going to assume that it's got a good base under it. And I think most of our houses in Anderson do have good bases under them. This is really a big change to make. The next slab that I'm familiar with, that's the one on the boulevard, it's where the walls are built up, and then the filled dirt is put in and brings it up to the level of the walls. And the slab is literally elevated, but it's got dirt under it. That one is the one that had the crack in the master bath. And I rejected the house because I didn't know what was causing the crack. Still don't know what's causing the crack. Don't know whether they've had any further troubles with it or not. But a man deserves to have a fair chance, and the fair chance is to give him the best he can get, and crawl space is the best he can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albergati. Any questions for Mr. Albergati? One more against, and then we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Albergati. We've got two?
My name is Ronald Hendricks. I spoke at the last meeting. I live in Bradley Park. I hope you recall the very first statement I made last, two weeks ago, whenever it was. We folks in Bradley Park very much want to see Mystic Vineyard succeed. We don't want to see ten houses there and then no more houses built. We want to succeed. I will say, and I say accurately, to address and answer your question, Mr. Murphy at our community meeting absolutely said that building a slab would allow us to increase our profit margin. If it were not so, I would not have said that. I would not stand here and make up something that I didn't hear. But that's what the man said, and that stands to reason. I understand that this is a problem. This gentleman has probably raised the most serious issue of all. I hadn't thought of it, and I don't know if anyone else has thought of it or not, but can you imagine future homeowners buying a slab house, and then suddenly it drops in a four-foot hole? I mean, somebody has a serious problem. And that sounds like, with all the debris that has been filled in there, that that's certainly a big possibility, that this can happen. So he emphasized the fact that we need to look out for these potential thirty-nine homeowners. I think that's important. The other issue that we have is the continuation of this particular property in the PD coming back year after year after year. I pointed out at the last meeting, it appears to me that the document they had requesting five changes was nothing but a strategic business plan for what they're leading to, sixteen-hundred-square-foot homes. Now, every step they have made has been cheapened down, cheapened down, cheapened down. The fact of the matter also, last year, I believe it was, perhaps the year before, but last year, when they wanted to reduce the setback on the rear lines, we certainly in Bradley Park were totally opposed to that and made it loudly known. They never did, if I'm not mistaken, identify if they were talking about only those homes, if they were asking for a variance at that time, which, in my mind, set a precedent. You allow variance on this lot, you allow variance on four or five other lots, that sets a precedent for allowing variance on other lots, which would back up against Bradley Park. Twelve feet from a patio, somebody else's patio? I don't think that's... We opposed it then and believed that it shouldn't have been approved, but if these type of things, continuing, 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 where and when is it going to stop? I also made the statement that myself personally, I didn't particularly object to the slab part at least two weeks ago. I said, "Because I don't live there. If I lived there, I would be vehemently opposed to it." But I think this gentleman raises a very important issue that somebody should be addressing and the potential for these lots and slabs to just disintegrate, sinkholes, what have you. And so we believe for future value and decreasing values, that this is what they have been going through, we're opposed to them continuing, making changes, cheapening down. And that's what they're doing, and we're opposed to it. Thanks, sir.
Any questions?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor Protem. And I don't know the answer, but I hear what you're saying about this slab could just sink down on this landfill as Mr., our dump site, that Mr. Albergati has referred to it, but I guess the same scenario could be for a crawl space as well. If a crawl space is sitting there, you're digging a foot, and that thing could drop down on those footings too, you know, if it's that bad of a site. I don't know. I'm not an expert. I defer to Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, it could, yeah. In fact, I had, this happened to me one time in a home I built. We didn't know it, but there was a well site on the property. And we went back, a guy told me, called me, said, "Look, one of my peers disappeared." So I said, "Well, what happened?" He said, "I don't know." So I go down, and this was a hand-dug well that was dug years and years ago. And the house had been built probably ten years after this happened. Sure enough, I crawl in there and take a flashlight, and I look down in the well, and my peer was probably eight feet down in the hole. But that's the only time I've ever had it. The only thing, when you talk about slabs, you're covering a larger area with a slab, and you're actually putting a footing in, because that's what the monolithic part of that is the outer bearing of the outer walls. They're very stable. I've never built but one house on a slab, and that was for a handicap person. He wanted where he could get in and out real easy.
Ms. Stewart, one more thing.
Yeah, and I guess the other part, I hear, I guess, these concerns from Bradley Park saying, you know, they're building cheaper, cheaper, cheaper homes. They're downgrading. And, but I haven't seen this information this gentleman has from Mystic Vineyards, but, and I don't have any reason to doubt it, but from what... and I don't have any reason to doubt it, but from what information that he's researched is that, you know, still the houses being built cheaper, 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 actually they're evaluated higher and higher from the Anderson tax assessors, you know, looking at that, and I don't know.
Well, let me just respond to that point because one thing I've learned forty-one years of practicing law and doing real estate work is you make a bad mistake if you try to go by the tax assessor's valuation to determine the value of a piece of property. What you go by is the market value, and that's totally different and can often be miles apart. And so I don't think the tax assessor's valuation, you'll find that newer constructed homes generally will have a higher tax valuation than older homes that have increased in market value. And that's the simple explanation, so.
I've always been told that true value of any piece of property is what a willing seller and willing buyer is willing to pay for it. That's called market value. Whatever it is, it don't have anything to do with anything else, just somebody's willing to pay for it.
We have one more speaker, and then we have another question over here. So let's go ahead and take care of this, and then we'll have your question answered.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is David Wakefield. I'm a resident of Bradley Park, have been living there for twelve or more years. I have been associated with the building business in Anderson through the financing of homes over twenty to twenty-five years. And it concerns me, as one or two people have mentioned here already tonight, that we keep coming back and revisiting something that has already been negotiated, already been settled on, and especially with a builder developer who has just recently bought this property and knew exactly what he was buying at the time he bought it. He knew what was existing there. He knew what, how the houses were built. He knew what the PUD documents stated. And so his purchase price should have reflected that when he bought the remaining lots and the right to develop them. So I think it, regardless of whether some of the, one or two of the current owners have signed a petition to be, to say they agreed to this, and I, like you, would love to see this development built out. Nothing could be better for Reed Road than to see nice green grass rather than weeds growing in Mystic Vineyard and up and down that road. But still, there is an element of trust, an element of dependence, an element of, as Mr. Donaway mentioned, emotion that comes with having to revisit a matter time and time again. Not all the houses in Bradley Park are worth two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, sell for two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. I have some three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in my house, a cost. I don't think I could sell it for that, but that's what I decided to pay when I built it. And I'm happy with that, and I'm happy that I live there. When you consider even changing the sideline setbacks, if you look ten to twelve feet, it's not a very big distance. To keep compacting that closer and closer together is a serious thing to do. This has all been worked out. I urge the council to be true to what was agreed on earlier and not keep bringing the neighbors back time and time again, despite the fact that there may be current owners who want to, are really motivated strongly to see their subdivisions built out. I don't know if the current owners have been compensated in any fashion for their signature. I doubt that the builder would. But anything that reduces the cost of the builder is designed to put more dollars in the pocket of the builder and, or to make that house sell easier. He may still have a difficult time selling if you were to allow slab to be built. I own a lot in another subdivision where, it's actually in the county, where a number of lots were sold to a new developer, a new builder, and quite frankly, they pretty much ruined the subdivision. The houses are big, they're bigger than most of the houses, but they don't look good. They don't present the same appearance that the houses that were built there prior to the change and the, where a developer was allowed a change to be made, and he did have the right to do it under the covenants, but it upset a lot of people. Lot values dropped probably from fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars in that development down to about forty thousand dollars. It, changes like this do impact the value of properties, they impact the way the properties are viewed by the public, and quite frankly, a slab on grade is not an attractive way to build a home. I doubt if you would have too many people here complaining about it if the slab was going to be built, whether it was built up, bricked around, and then the slab built inside the filled-in area, as was discussed earlier. But regardless, I urge the council not to keep revisiting this matter and this development, put this project to bed, to rest once and for all that reminds you please that the builder, the developer knew what he was buying when he bought it. And this can be nothing more than something to help the bottom line going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. We have one more person. Would you get up and give your name and where you live?
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Massaris, and I live in Garden Gate, back up to Mystic Vineyards. And I just really have one comment and maybe a question on my part. I quote from the development plan that the sales price, it says homes will range in price from three-hundred thousand dollars to four-hundred thousand dollars at the time of construction. I understand now that on their marketing website and other things that I have seen, they are selling and advertising in the mid-two-hundred thousands. So there's already a drop in value, and based on the information I'm hearing today, it sounds like there could be an additional drop in value. So that's strictly a comment and an observation, and we'd like for everyone to take that into account.
Thank you, ma'am. One thing, Mr. McKenzie, last meeting we had, we brought this particular item up. Could you just revisit that just for this lady here, please?
In the PUD document, as she mentioned, the sales was between three and four-hundred thousand dollars at time of construction.
Yes.
That is in there. We spoke with the city attorney, and that is something that we have determined is really not enforceable. We, bottom line is, we can't go to closings with people when they're buying and selling houses. So that's something that makes it very difficult for us to enforce.
But is it correct? But is it correct that the other side of that coin is that you have certain requirements like crawl space, like materials, like certain roofing, and because of that, the quality is somewhat determinable? Now, you could go out and spend half a million dollars to build a house, and it'd be, you know, look great, but there's nothing says you can't go, you can't decide to sell it for two-hundred thousand dollars. Now, you'd be crazy to do it, but you could. But what I'm saying is, the very reason that we have all these specific requirements in this document is to maintain the quality level that fits in with the surrounding neighborhoods. Does that make sense?
Sure. Quality of construction, the square footage of houses, a lot of things factor into a value of a home.
And I guess in two thousand and eight, I guess, when that, I guess, that document came out, maybe they thought that the homes could sell for three to four hundred thousand. Now, we're two thousand and fifteen, and it's a different market, different time period, market could be down lower, and so now you're adjusting to fluctuate what the market is, you know, seven, eight years later.
You're also asking the surrounding neighbors that have their investments in their properties and have had for years to come to the rescue of developers so they can make a few extra dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, since we have no other speakers, I would like to have a motion concerning this matter. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
I just wanted to make a comment, I guess a question, which may seem kind of simple. But the ones who live in Bradley Park, if we deny this request and the developer decides, well, I'm just not going to build anything here, and we're going to be left with a lot of empty lots that might be grown up and really devalue your property, what do you think about that?
I got a question about that. Why doesn't the city, excuse me, doesn't the city have an ordinance that has to have properly cut grass and things of this nature?
But it wasn't before the developer got there, you know, it looked, it was the same property I'm thinking about.
A lot of businesses in the city of Anderson, Harsh Holloway came and threatened to put me in jail because a piece of property behind me, the grass had grown up, and I didn't even own the property. Comes by and that was Duke Power, railroad way had been out there, but there are ordinances.
Yeah, I just wanted your thoughts on that. Would you rather see?
And I say that to say this, Councilman, these ordinances need to be enforced. We've got a house right below us right now, in below my business across the multimillion-dollar Anderson University complex, and I'm glad the subject has come up, has been sitting there burned for seven years. And if you'll go back and check your codes, Brother John, isn't that correct? I've discussed it with you and Linda both. And the code says that if a house is burned more than fifty percent, that that house is supposed to come down. And they have eighty-five days, I believe, to do it. Seven years, it's been sitting there. Mr. Roberts there is very much well assured of what I'm talking about. So if you're going, you know, we don't need no more laws. We just think somebody enforced what's going on. And so the guy went and said, "Well, I'm going to start working on that house." So he went up and got a permit for putting the window in. And he ain't been back since, and he ain't putting the window in.
But I really, I just really wanted to get your thoughts on that. Would you rather see an empty lot?
And I think we need to follow through, and that stuff wouldn't be grown up if the city enforced.
You are so right, sir. I agree with that. But, uh...
Just wait a minute. There's a gentleman back here that's been wanting to say something.
Could I just finish this to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, what are your thoughts? Would you rather see an empty lot, a house, that's fairly decent, you know, it may not be, but you live in Bradley Park, but according to those pictures that were passed around by Mr. Donaway, pretty good-looking houses. So which would you prefer?
Can I address that?
Yes, sir.
I would address that in this fashion, and I mentioned it in my remarks, it maybe didn't come across to this point, but the builder, Americans builders, bought this subdivision a year or so ago, knowing all of the codes, knowing what the PUD requirements are. And they can, they don't have to make this much money. They can make this much money and still probably come out, they can probably come out with this much, and they can certainly break even with this much. That's what a developer's life is about, is making a decision, going in to do a job, and doing everything he can to make it easier for him to get that job done. And putting these houses on slabs, putting them closer together, all of these things will make him, make that job easier. But as Mr. Kirvin pointed out, properly pointed out, we are paying part of that price as neighbors. And we are asking you just to stand by what you've already agreed to, what's already been negotiated, so that we can all go home and have dinner, just like I'm sure all of you would like.
Sir, back there, you want to just stand there and...
I'm trying to speak loud enough. Can you hear?
Yes, sir.
I've come down there if I could, but you don't want to wait on me. I'm in charge of the Homeowner Association. I live in Garden Gate, 102, live there since December of ninety-nine. We moved there because we liked the quality of that house. It was the last one in the subdivision sold, and I monitored its construction, and it's everything that I'd want in a house. And we moved very happy with the new house, only to discover that Mystic Code was coming. They debated the name, et cetera, followed it avidly. Tried to talk to the people who were considering buying it. Tried to talk to Mr. Joe Beard. I talked to Tony Sevelli, that didn't do any good, it was too late. He'd already offered his bid, was ready to run. Joe Beard got it, and I watched him haul load after load after load of gray clay out of what used to be a creek bed. I went down one day, before I fell, and I said, "Mr. Beard, you have a difficult charge." Shook his head with a few choice words and said, "I wish somebody had told me about this place. I put my fortune in this place, and now I'm digging a deep hole." Well, I say he's managed to move on down the line. Well, I said to Mr. Beard, "If you'd asked me, I'd have told you." I watched you the whole time, and I knew it was a rock pile and a concrete dumping place, but he didn't ask. Swoked in out of Atlanta, paid his big bucks, and thought he was going to make a fortune. And, you know, I got sympathy for him, but I can't help him. What I'm concerned about now is are my children ever going to get back the money I paid for my house?
That's right.
And Mr. Kirvin made that point a long, long time ago, when they were here asking for concessions to begin with. And he stated it something like this, "In respect to the neighborhood, we have an upscale neighborhood that deserves to be honored and respected and protected. And we said no to a lot of things. We got from seventy-nine houses that they first wanted down to fifty-three, and we've done nothing but badger and badger and badger, been badger, over and over again." My comment is, and I'm not angry, I'm just tired. Enough is enough. Now, you know, I'd give them their six feet offset just to be done with it, but I hated the thirty-nine people that are going to buy those houses on slab. I can tell you some real horror stories. Give you one, and I'm through. I lived in Columbia in a patio home while I was passing shirts down there. And the horror story was, they had to put the heat in and water and all of this in the ceiling because of the slab. Rather than dig it up, they went to the attic. Well, guess what? First time it dropped below thirty-two, you know what happened? They had to get the place and rebuild it again. So my heart goes out, not just for those of us who've already lost value on our houses because of two thousand and eight riots, but what's going to be lost if you permit this to go through. We are not responsible for people that didn't do their homework while they're out to make an extra buck at our expense. And that's all I got to say. As an old boy says, "Would you like to buy a box of chocolates?"
Thank you, sir. Whatever motion we...
I'd like to make one more comment, if you don't mind.
One more comment, and that's it.
Okay. I would appreciate very much if the city of Anderson would see whether this goes through or whether it doesn't, if that place is cleaned up, the grass is cut, or something of that nature to whether there's any more houses built there or not. And I feel like as a taxpayer of the city of Anderson, I think the city of Anderson owes that to us because we've got situations on the book that will take care of that.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Kirvin?
Well, you wanted to get a motion?
Yes, sir.
And I'm willing to make a motion, but I'd like to preface it first by saying, of course, this is in my area.
Yes, sir.
So I'm concerned about it, and as has been pointed out, this council has always, in my memory, always done everything possible to protect existing neighborhoods. And to me, that's what we're dealing with here tonight, and as the representative from this area, I'm asking you to continue that, that noble position, protect these neighborhoods. These folks have invested dollars, lots of dollars, and they have maintained their homes. They've lived there for years, some of them. And this, this development right here has an impact on about four surrounding neighborhoods, at least four. And we knew that at the very beginning. And we went through a painstaking process with all of these different neighborhoods involved to one degree or another, and we came out with a set of rules that were defined, they were set down in writing, and it wasn't everything that the neighborhoods wanted. They said, you know, a lot of things, they said, "Well, we don't really like this, but we'll go along with it." And it wasn't everything the developers wanted, but they said, "Okay, we can live with that." And a deal was struck. And that's been at least seven, eight, ten years ago. And that's been at least seven, eight, ten years ago. The big thing I've heard tonight, and the thing that's bothered me all along, is that, you know, the folks that live in these neighborhoods can't come back and say, "Well, look, we thought this over, we'd like to cut that down to thirty lots." You know, they don't do that. They haven't been able to do that. But yet, every time a new developer comes into play, he wants to come in and change the deal. And I think that's not fair. And what I've heard time and time again is that the people that live in this area are tired of having to fight this battle over and over and over. I would submit to you that the best way to deal with that is for us to send a clear message tonight by denying this request. And the clear message is, no, the deal was done, and you knew it when you came into this project, these developers and the lot owners that had bought, and they knew exactly what the rules were, and knew what the agreement was. And the message tonight is, no, we're not going to change that. Now, on the setback thing, I think there's probably a consensus that that wouldn't be terrible in some situations where it might be necessary, but I would submit that that is better handled on a case-by-case basis through a variance process that we have in place. And if there's a particular lot, and the house that's going to go on that lot can't fit on there for some reason, and they need this slight adjustment, that's exactly what the variance process is for. So I would make the motion that we deny the request.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Kirvin. I have a motion to deny the request from Steve Kirvin, and we have a second. Mr. John Roberts?
Mayor Protem. I have a question.
Certainly, you have a question.
Mr. Kirvin, I agree with a lot of stuff you said, but just for a point of clarification, Mr. Roberts, myself, and Mayor Roberts also represent that area as at large. Sometimes I think our council get too seated in, "This is my seat, this is my seat, what's Mr. Roberts' seat, my seat," and Mayor Roberts' seat also. And, you know, a slab, I think, one of the residents in Bradley Park, you know, for some reason, our slab in our area is, nobody likes them. People don't realize that most two-story houses in Anderson, South Carolina are built on a slab. Very few two-story houses with a basement, if a two-story house has a basement, it's built on a slab. A lot of people don't realize that, and the fellow from, you know, for some reason, they just don't like slabs. But I did want to add that.
Well, and let me just respond briefly to that, Mr. Harbin. I did not forget for a single minute that the mayor and the two at-large representatives both do cover this area, and these are constituents of yours.
Exactly right.
I just wanted to see if you remembered it.
Oh, absolutely. Okay. Mr. Stewart has a comment.
And I, I guess the, Mr. Kirvin, I guess the thing that I agree with you most is I hate to have to keep bringing all these people from Bradley Park and other neighborhoods back and back and back and back. I just, I don't like that either. But we're here. And I would, you know, I would submit, you know, that I know there's a motion and a second on the floor, but from my standpoint, and I've heard it from the constituents in Bradley Park, they don't have a problem with a six-foot setback. That's not really the issue. They could live with that. And I think we've identified the lots, you know, or the applicant has identified the lots where they want this setback at tonight, and on those particular lots. But as far as the slab versus the crawl space, in my opinion, I think whoever is buying that lot as an owner, who's going to, or a potential homeowner, it ought to be their choice whether they want a slab or a crawl space. It's not for us to dictate whether they have a slab or a crawl space. Leave it up to the owner. If they want to spend that extra money for that, you know, leave it up to them. But that's just my position, but I hear the motion is on the floor, but I just wanted to put that out there.
One last statement, Mr. Kirvin.
Well, I just want to respond to Mr. Stewart, and, you know, tonight we came, and all the material we had was about changing the setback on three lots.
I understand that.
And I was, I was prepared to support that, because I said, "Well, they've looked at it, and they've determined that that's the problem on those three lots, that's fine." But we're walking here tonight, we get handed a piece of paper, said, "Oh, by the way, and that's ten lots now." Well, you know, I don't know whether that's the problem on all ten lots or not, but I do know that if they really need to get that relief, there's a process in place to get it. And they can go, and they can apply for it, and they can go through and convince the people they need, convince that, yes, we do need this variance. As far as the other about letting it be optional, that's not the deal. The deal was cut. It specifically requires that there be a crawl space in the construction of these homes. And that's part of the compromise that was reached by all these parties eight or ten years ago. So that's not really a workable way to go.
Part of the plan, part of the PD.
Right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. We're going to vote. This is one of those votes that's not going to make everybody happy, that's for sure. But?
Mayor Protem, if we vote on this, and can there be a second motion after this to approve the ten lots? And I don't have a problem with the ten lots set.
I think they could do it through the variance.
Well, I think, why go through the variance and make the applicant have to wait longer? Why, he's already identified the ten and say, "Hey, this is the ten, there's no more."
Well, let's vote on what we have. And Frankie, do you have a question, a statement there?
Do you have a question of me?
Yes, sir. Do I have a question of you? Yes, sir. Can we do that?
If Mr. Stewart wants to amend the motion, then you'd have to vote on the amendment first, before you vote on the main motion.
The main motion was Mr. Kirvin's motion.
Right.
Mayor Protem, I mean, if the residents don't have a problem with the six-foot setback, I would, I would like to amend that to make it easier for the developer to be able to get it, to be more pro-business, pro-builder, than make it more of a difficult to be able to get a variance, you know, at a different time, if they don't have a problem with it.
Well, you know, I've been sitting here the same time you've been sitting here, and that ain't what I heard. I mean, I heard a number of people say, "Yeah, they did have a problem with it, probably not as big as the slab." There were numerous people that said, "Yeah, that's too close to get." So, I mean, I don't think that's accurate.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
All right, so we went from three to ten tonight, so, and the original reasoning was a particular style of house that has been popular would fit those three. Is it because of that particular style of house? Can somebody answer that? That that's what they plan to build on those seven additional lots? I mean, what's the reasoning behind the request for the additional seven lots?
We don't know. We don't know. That was news.
Mr. Dunaway is going to answer, I think.
We came in here with three. Come up and say you did.
He said he wasn't sure either. If it's proper, I'll ask Mr. Valdill.
Please.
We are trying to put a larger footprint. We have some houses that have a larger footprint. The only lots they could possibly go on would be the corner lots, and even on those corner lots, they still won't fit.
They'll fit with the six-foot variance, correct?
With the six-foot setback, they would fit. With the seven and a half, the way we have right now, they would not.
Well, the problem with doing this goes back to what, I can't remember if it was Mr. Ellenbauer or somebody said, that you run the risk of setting a precedent. And you go in and do ten, there's no rhyme or reason that where we might decide to put this particular house on this and it won't fit, wait until they get ready to know what they're going to put on there, and then get a variance.
That's right.
And if you don't do that, then there's no reason why they couldn't come back later and say, "Oh, we decided we want that same setback on all the lots like they did initially." So the safest way to do it, and to send the message I'm talking about, is to deny this request in full, leave them the opportunity to get whatever variances they need on the setback at the time when it comes up.
We, okay, we have a, an alternate motion on the floor.
Can I second that?
Do we? You second that?
We have an opportunity to speak to that before you vote.
Yes, sir, you do.
When is this going to end?
It could end tonight, I think.
A motion, I'd make a motion, whatever you give them tonight, that's it.
Can I answer that?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I mean, I think that's sort of my point. If we continue to do every lot of variance, then you're going to have to keep coming back to oppose each lot to the variance committee.
It goes through what he said, it's already on the books.
It's already on the books.
No, it'll go to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kirvin, if the developer wants a variance that will go to another, to the, to the public hearing, and these folks have to come back out to a public hearing to oppose each variance they approved for, if we give them ten tonight on the ten lots that are odd-shaped, then they won't have to come back out.
It's done, it's over with. Well, you don't know whether they have to come back out or not, because there's no telling what they're going to ask for next week.
I don't disagree with that, but.
So I don't think that's any protection at all. And it may be that you have a particular, it may be that you have a particular lot involved with wanting to change the setback, and some people may, they may say, "Well, I'm so far away from that, I don't care." Others may be right behind it and say, "Well, I do care, I'm going to go speak up." So I just don't think it's the kind of thing that needs to be handled in a bullet process. It should be handled on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, there's an alternate motion to, to, if I'm understanding this right, there's an alternate motion to go ahead and give the eleven?
Ten.
Ten.
Well, I think it was a motion to amend, wasn't it?
There was a motion to amend.
That isn't correct. You can't, you cannot do an amendment after a motion.
Frankie?
Right.
Can I second this?
My understanding is that there's a motion to amend.
But what we'll vote on first is the amendment.
Right.
So, all in favor? Now, what the amendment is about, what the amendment is about is to allow them the setback on the ten lots.
I got a question. Is when that is voted on and approved, no more amendment, no more can be done, is that correct, is what you're saying?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, sir.
Okay, well, what is, I don't understand what you're doing here.
Because Mr. Harbin made the statement that he wanted to amend the motion, and we're going to vote on that first, and then we'll vote on the, on denying the rest.
And if that is defeated, then we go vote on the full motion.
Would you say what you're voting on right now?
Right now, we're voting on to amend the motion to allow setbacks on ten properties.
Ten designated properties.
That's correct.
Designated properties, yes, sir.
For the amount.
Well, I thought that the three which were started out with, and then tonight you added the seven, and I thought the seven, you said, somebody said needed to be changed because it was a curve. Okay, I could see in the drawing the curve for part of it, but where those seven are, it's straight. So why do they need the setback? If you look at that picture.
I understand. I understand, but we're going to vote on this motion. It can be denied, you understand that?
Right.
Well, let me also explain and say that, you know, if this amendment gets approved, then you can never change it unless the developer came in and wanted to change it. But if it gets denied, then the developer still has a remedy for the lots that really need a setback adjustment. So the only logical thing to do is to deny the amendment, to protect everybody.
Okay, all in, all, all in favor of the?
Let me clarify. These ten lots that he's, my motion was to amend, my amendment motion was to let these ten have six-foot setbacks, and for different reasons, for curves, for pie shapes, for footprints of houses that'll fit on these that'll be bigger ones. And to, it piggybacks your motion to deny the slabs, but allow these ten. And it's my understanding that these, this will keep these folks, unless they reapply for more variances, that have to come to us, or will that come to the variance?
Either way.
Either way, it's going to come back to us.
It could if they applied to amend the PDD. If they apply for variance, it would go to the zoning adjustment appeals.
Okay. And my reasoning behind this was to keep these folks from continually having to approve that, and we heard two different things. You know, I don't, I didn't hear everybody having a big problem or a major problem with the six-foot.
And I didn't say everybody.
We do, for three, for three lots. Could you also say in your proposal that there will be no additional lots ever added? I mean, is there no more?
No, we're not going to do that.
Well, that's the problem. You see, you've got a PDD document, and the developers can come in at any time and ask to change. And so that's.
Well, we have a motion, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and vote on it. This is to either approve the setbacks on the ten lots or not to. All in favor of approving the setbacks on the ten lots, raise your hand, please. Three. All in favor of not approving the setbacks? Four. It does not, it does not win. Okay, the second motion is to?
The original motion.
The original motion is to deny the changes. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say, can, raise your hands. All opposed? The motion is denied. Thank you, folks, for being here.
I'll move on to the next one. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that. Give a minute or two for those folks moving.
See what happens when you're out of work for a while.
We still have business, ladies and gentlemen. If you would, please step outside if you want to discuss anything.
Mr., what's his name waving at you?
The second, new business, the second old business tonight. The second old business tonight is to consideration of an ordinance to rezone 612 North McDuffie Street from Limited Office to Neighborhood Commercial. Mr. Moore, if you could give us some information?
I'll ask Maurice, I think, hopefully this will be brief, if he'll give you the background on this one.
Yes, this request is to rezone 612 North McDuffie Street from LO Limited Office to NC Neighborhood Commercial. This property, as you can see on your map in your packet, it's located behind the Anderson County Museum. It's also adjacent to Attorney's Office, and it's across the street from Car Wash. So a lot of different land uses going on in this particular block. The applicant requests to rezone the property in order to operate a retail cigar shop and smoking lounge, and in LO Limited Office, retail sales are not allowed. So the next zoning up would be NC Neighborhood Commercial, and that's what they're requesting to rezone it to. The property has been in use as an office for a number of years. There is adequate parking already in place to handle a change in use such as this. And the Planning Commission did hear this request last week on March third, and they unanimously recommended approval of this.
Any questions, concerns?
Mayor Protem, this particular parcel sits in my seat, Councilman Harbin's seat, Councilman Robert's seat, and Councilman, Mayor Robert's seat as well. So, you know, I'm speaking from my perspective as a small portion of that seat. I know I spoke with the applicant, and I know he's spoken with the adjacent property owners, you know, the museum. I told him that it's very important, making sure everybody was on board with it. He has gotten back. I haven't gotten any negative feedback from it, and I don't know about my fellow council members, but if they don't have any questions, I would make a motion that we approve this on first reading.
Second. Okay, Mr. Roberts, second. We have a motion on the floor.
I've got a quick question.
You have a quick question? Mr. Harbin has a quick question.
Mr. McKenzie, at the hearing, did anybody speak against it?
Yes, sir. No one spoke against it, and we actually have a letter from an adjacent property owner that does not oppose the request either, so.
Okay. And I think that's where I've gotten a couple of phone calls from, the adjacent property owner.
Okay, no one spoke in opposition.
All right, thank you.
Do you have some concerns, Mr. Harbin?
No, the adjacent property owner did, but obviously. Don't think it makes sense.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, no new business tonight. Mr. Moore, you have some administrative briefing for us?
Good thing we got a shortage in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, it is.
The only thing left is the calendar, a couple of things I'd point out this week. Still time, if you'd like to go Thursday, the Anderson County Municipal Association will be hosted by Iowa, so if you'll let Brandy know. And then the only other thing for the month is on Saturday, the St. And then the only other thing for the month is on Saturday, the St. Patty's Lucky Meat Color Fun Run is at eight AM, and then the St. Patty's Parade at ten AM downtown. Uh, that's been a, a very, um, enjoyable experience for a lot of folks, and the city is a major player in sponsoring that event. So those are the two things we got. So come enjoy St. Patty's Day downtown.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do have one other thing.
One other thing, Mr. Stewart?
Just like, just to mention, I know this past weekend, the City of Anderson hosted the, um, uh, I guess would be the Upper State, uh, youth basketball tournament at the Rec